We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republiq for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask Counselor Cook to read our mission statement?
Mission Statement of the town of Silver City. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and the visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and high quality of life.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda with action is public input. We have one person signed up, and you have five minutes to speak. And if you're looking at me, I'll give you a one-minute warning. And we have Sissy McAndrew reference the Green Chamber update.
Happy New Year, council and staff. Just quickly wanted to give you an update on what's transpired in the last couple of months due to the fact that we've got the legislative session coming, and it may be a while before we can give our full quarterly report. Wanted to let you know that we did have a recycling recognition program that was held in November. We also hosted the New Mexico Tourism Commission for its quarterly meeting on December 7th. We had the Tamal Fiesta on the 8th. We had an economic forum dealing with community development and tourism on the 12th of December. And of course, you passed a proclamation for our Bi-Local Week and our Shop and Stay Program. And then we also had a guest writer in town who's writing a book on bed and breakfasts and also New Mexico food, Sharon Niederman. And she came in town for four days and was hosted at several B&amp;Bs and also went out and dined at our restaurants. And that's going to leverage a lot of publicity for us, third party, which is great. And our tourism right now has been consistent with last year. Of course, it's planning, programming, implementation, and now we'll be getting to the evaluation stage and looking at our return on investment. And hopefully, I'll be able to provide you with part of that report at the next council meeting. So are there any questions at all? All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to give some graphs over to the town clerk so she can distribute those to you later.
Thank you, Sissy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. And we can start with Counselor Maronis.
No comments, Ray.
Thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, Happy New Year to everybody. And we had very many residents downtown area for Christmas and for New Year's Day. Also, I want to say that I want to give congratulations to Coach Luis Alvarado from the Silver High School and the Cobra, resting coaches and the kids. They had a tournament here this past weekend, and of course, Silver High took first place. But the thing is that there was a lot of people that came downtown to Silver, to Grand County, and they supported by staying in the hotels and even here. Also, we had a meeting on the trails on the Boston Hill, and I urge everybody to see if they can attend. It's for your benefit for the trails in the Boston Hill area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cook.
Tim, thank you, Payna, for I need a work order, and he got right on it and did it. Thank you very much. I'd like to also thank, I'd like to just thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for doing good jobs last year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you. Chief Van Comwell, thank you for coming in and inviting me to the town party. I was invited to the Black Tide, and that ticket was really expensive. So, sorry. Thank you for coming and inviting me, but I couldn't make it.
Thank you, Counselor Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you to Chief Van Comwell for inviting me to the ceremony for the Fire Department. I really enjoyed attending, and I hope tonight you'll give us a brief report, an update on who was Fireman of the Year and all the different awards and citations you gave out. It was very impressive, and it was wonderful that you wanted our firemen that way. It's impressive what they do and what they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, you want to grab those two chairs and put them in? Make sure we have enough room. Thank you. Well, it's nice to see a full crowd. It's our first meeting of the year, and we have some important business on the agenda. So it's good to see all of you here to participate in that. And we will move right along. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda's approved. And next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of December 11th, 2012.
Yes, Mayor.
Counselor.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11th, 2012.
Second.
I'll second a minute.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11th, 2012. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no discussion, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11th, 2012. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion, case. Before we move on, since we have a full crowd, I'm going to back up a little bit. We have numerous openings on boards and commissions, some advisory, some not. We have openings on Grand County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission. We have openings on the Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Citizens Advisory Committee. We have openings on Incentive Review Committee. We have openings on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. We have openings on the Museum Board. And I encourage all of you, you can go to the website and get the application. You can review what the committees are for, what their function is, or you can contact the town clerk or go by NCB, and she will help you out. And the next item on the agenda is under reports. We have a report by John Krebsman and Ken Romig, reference their contractors on the Abandoned Mine Lands Program of New Mexico Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department. They're going to talk about Boston Hill. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Marshall and counselors. Really pleased to be here in Silver City. Really enjoy visiting. I really enjoy visiting this town. I'm going to give a brief introduction of the Abandoned Mine Land Program, which is a state agency federally funded. And following that, Ken Romig from Decker Parry Sabatini will give an introduction to the Boston Hill project, which will look at addressing mine safety on the hill. The New Mexico Abandoned Mine Land Program was formed in 1981 as a result of the 1977 Federal Surface Mining Control and Reclamation Act, which puts funds into an abandoned mine land fund based on active coal mining in the state of New Mexico. So these are funds raised in New Mexico and being spent in New Mexico. Fortunately, we not only work on coal mine problems, but also on hard rock problems. The program, as I said, started in 1981. We've done some projects in and around Boston Hill and in and around Silver City. The types of projects we do are divided into three priorities. The first priority are immediate, high-level, public health and safety problems associated with abandoned mine lands. The second priority will be health and safety issues that are not an immediate hazard. And the third priority is restoration of water and soil resources, lands that have been degraded by historic mining practices. And restoration of those of the priority three type projects need to enhance and facilitate the higher priorities. And so when we come to hard rock closures or non-coal closures, the Abandoned Mine Land Program is limited to addressing priorities one and two. However, we can and do respect the setting that these projects are in. So Boston Hill being open space, clearly that will, that setting will be taken into account in any work that the Abandoned Mine Land Program funds on Boston Hill. And this could include ancillary work such as enhancing recreation resources. Now, why are we working on Boston Hill? Clearly, one reason is that it's close to Silver City. There are town open space. There's a lot of public access to Boston Hill, and consequently, a fairly high degree of exposure of citizens to the mine hazards that exist on Boston Hill. As in all of our projects, we do look at the various issues that are related to the project. And this can include things like wildlife habitats such as bats that use underground mine workings for hibernation, or summer maternity colonies, small mammals that may use underground mine workings, as well as the historic and recreational uses of the area. Boston Hill, as you know, is not solely owned by the town of Silver City, but also by other multiple landowners, including private landowners and VLM. The Abandoned Mine Land Program can and does work on both public and private lands. We know that there are many different stakeholder concerns and issues regarding the use of Boston Hill and what the Abandoned Mine Land Program might be doing on the properties up there. Being a federally funded program, we do fund not only the preparatory work to doing mine safeguarding and cleanups at mine sites, but also construction. Where we do have some limitations is in long-term maintenance, although we do try to build closures and facilities that require either no maintenance or a minimum of maintenance. The program does sunset in 2021, and if that does happen, we will continue to maintain what we build until the time the program sunsets. And with that, I will hand it over to Ken Romig from Decker Parry Sabatini.
Mayor, counselors, thank you very much for hosting us. As John mentioned, my name is Ken Romig. I'm a landscape architect with Decker Parry Sabatini. I'm a project manager for this Boston Hill safeguarding mines on Boston Hill. And I've... Sure. All right. I'm the project manager hired with a team of consultants for the management of the safeguarding mines on Boston Hill in the town of Silver City. We've assembled a team of planners, landscape architects, environmental scientists, and biologists, as well as some well-known community liaisons to assist in our effort. Decker Parry Sabatini is an interdisciplinary group of architects, engineers, planners, and landscape architects within the office in Las Cruces and Amarillo. For this project being such, being so integral to the town of Silver City, we teamed with a series of consultants that are very close at hand, including Goldr Associates of Silver City in Albuquerque, Karpoff, Tim Karpoff and Associates, a facilitator, a meeting facilitator, Dos Rios Consultants, an archaeological consultant service, Ecosphere Environmental Services out of Durango, working on the environmental and biological studies, Cashperson Engineering of Silver City, and Joseph Gendron, civil engineer and community liaison. Since the 1980s, as John mentioned, I think it's safe to say that AML, the Abandoned Mine Land Program, has reacted to hazards associated with abandoned mine hazards statewide. Since the 1990s, AML has developed a more proactive approach that tackles its priorities on lands with multiple landowners with diverse interests. And in these projects, there is a necessity to develop a planning effort with strong public outreach components. Recognizing the diverse land ownership of the open space property as well as the surrounding properties, the public outreach effort is focused on true genuine conversations with stakeholders and local organizations about what makes Boston Hill special and preserving the legacy of mining that the area is known for. DPS and a team under AML direction is committed to integrating local expertise and artists into the plan to safeguard mines on Boston Hill. We are also committed to approaching the project with respect for mining legacy and wildlife habitat. And lastly, in the event that the community consensus is to leave Boston Hill as it is, AML will take no action. Our scope of work is comprised of four tasks. Phase one is assessment. Phase two, plan. Three, design. And four, construction assistance. I'll go into each one of these tasks in order. One, assessment, has to do with gathering information, understand the regulatory framework that we're working within, the county, the town, all the different regulatory bodies, including possibly Bureau of Land Management, as well as the limitations of the Abandoned Mine Land Program and the opportunities of the Abandoned Mine Land Program. We're researching at this point biological, archaeological, and historical resources, and we're developing a plan for public meetings. We're mapping at this point. We're gathering GIS information and assessing the hazards that may be associated with past mining features. We are communicating in a manner where we're able to speak or interview primary stakeholders, interview landowners, and there is an intention to create a website where people can very easily access information about the project. And finally, we'll be developing a plan. So where are we in this current project status? We're in the very beginning of assessing what we're up against. We've researched the regulatory framework and the history. We are still integrating our archaeological information and biological information into our assessment of the conditions of Boston Hill. Interviews, we've interviewed the city manager, Mr. Brown. We've talked to landowners. We've had an opportunity to speak with Counselor Ray, and we appreciated that very much at the senior center. We have also talked to several nonprofit groups. We're in the process of mapping and integrating all of that GIS information into a cohesive map, and we are still in the process of looking at the site. And there is one thing I should also mention. We are looking at the stability, or we are conducting an analysis, and this is an AML project separate from our contract, but it's a stability analysis of the legal tender envelope complex, which is... It's a pure technical stability analysis of the large cave in Boston Hill. So we know its stability, its ability to support weight, and it's basically assessing the capability for the roof, the ceiling, to stay congruent or in place. We've mapped, this is the extent of our mapping at this point. You can see that of course the blue outline is the open space area, and we have a yellow outline on the outside which indicates our study area or a buffer area where if we find mine hazards or hazards associated with mining, we can document them and try to see if they are truly hazardous, if they pose a hazard, and if we can correct that hazard. The purple area in the center was mined post-1977 and is technically not part of our study. And finally, we're looking at topographic depressions, and that's probably fairly hard to see. However, it's in green, and it indicates where we have high walls and possible hazards that we need to assess. That's phase one, assessment. Phase two, this is if the community consensus is for us to continue our work, we have the opportunity to work on phase two, which is to plan further, have public meetings and field design sessions, which might include, will likely include, full-scale mockups of the previous. For instance, if we want small walls, small knee walls to keep people from falling off a high wall, or closing off a significant hazard but yet allowing bats to enter and exit. Those things will be illustrated and vetted by the community. There is also an opportunity for us to have historical signage and that sort of thing. Finally, we'll draft a report for everyone's review and comment. Phase two is the design phase where we create the designs or create the working drawings that turn into bidable documents for contractors. That would include cost estimates and coordinating the design with structural engineers, biologists, and archaeological resources to see that we're not disturbing anything. And I show in this slide the rock work, which I think is so prevalent and so extraordinary in the town of Silver City as a precedent for items or improvements that may be made to keep visitors on Boston Hill safe from the hazards that are part of the disarming landscape. Finally, construction assistance, which includes monitoring the construction and maybe everything, including PAAS and that sort of thing. Finally, just to give you a sense of schedule, we have a phase one assessment will be completed in March 2013. We plan, if in fact, phase two occurs, to get started in the plan and the design sessions in the spring of 2013, design in the summer of 2013, and construction assistance at this point. It's hard to say when that's going to happen, but I imagine it could be in early fall 2013, or maybe this time next year. Thank you very much. I'm more than willing to answer questions, and so can John, if you have anything for us.
Have you, has your office contacted anybody that used to work there?
That used to work?
At the Boston Hill?
No. That would be wonderful for you, some people who weren't there. We would love that. That would be, that would be wonderful. But the memories that people carry to this landscape is something that we can illustrate in historical signage, in any number of narratives that we might be able to give to visitors. It would be wonderful if we could do that. Do you know of any, Counselor? I'd love to.
I did.
You did? Well, I hope that, I hope you can tell me all your stories. Appreciate it.
I will, at your convenience.
At your service.
Thank you.
Is there a, I mean, for, to attack you and submit comments, concerns, ideas?
Absolutely, yes. I have a couple cards. I can hand those out. There are, we are also, we put out a public service announcement that went out in all the papers, that my phone number is on that. My phone number, if you're welcome to call me, at 505-923-3598. Or you can email me your comments at kenr@dpsdogpuppy7tdesign.org. I'd be glad to speak with anybody and talk about their opinions.
Jeff, you could give one of your cards to the town clerk, and then she can put it on her website for people to find it easily.
Sure.
That would be very helpful. Any other questions, Counselor Madison?
When do you foresee the community consensus that you want to reach taking place? Because it says it's to take place in phase two, but that's also when you do your field design sessions. So the community consensus, whether to go forward or how to proceed with this?
I, it's going to be, I imagine it like this. Right now, we're on a contract for one full public meeting. If there are, in fact, if there's a need for more public meetings, that is certainly possible. But I imagine that what we hear from stakeholders now in this first phase will be presented as a general, the general idea of what we have heard up to now. And then from that, it's very good, it's useful to get people's reaction to that general consensus that we have heard. And then I think it's an iterative process. In my opinion, there are constant conversations to arrive at what the community may want to do. to do. And it will be at that public meeting, and perhaps more, at interviews, and with meetings with local organizations, and nonprofits. And then at the field design sessions, I imagine there'll be even more refinement of the community consensus about what improvements they would like to see.
I would actually mean whether non-improvements are made, because you said there was a no. I want to make sure I say it right.
A no action, or?
Yes. I mean, at what point is that decision reached? And at what point does the data that you collect from whatever meetings, I mean, reach to proceed or to not proceed? I mean, where does that, where does that bar set?
I imagine that'll happen at the public meeting. We'll enter Phase Two, and then at that public meeting, I think that we will get a general consensus if we are to go forward at that point.
Okay, and then also, from any input you receive from folks calling or emailing?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you. Next up is staff reports. Mr. Brown, do you have a report? Our wonderful town clerk and...
I just want to report on the election day tonight. Did you hear anything coming out?
I don't hear it at all.
Hello, this is...
Okay.
Today is the day for persons to declare their candidacy for the county office. And we had two persons filed, which I have certified. There was Cynthia and Bedison for District One, Counselor, a two-year term, and Jose A. Ray Jr., Counselor for District Three, for a two-year term. We only have those two persons filed today. Next Tuesday, on the fifteenth, is the day for persons to file as a write-in candidate if they choose, and it's in my office for me to find. I also wanted to remind voters that they need to update their voter registration if they've changed their name or changed addresses with the county clerk. And the deadline to do that, in order to vote properly in our election, is Tuesday, February 5th. Also, January 29th is the first day for absentee voting at City Hall. Early voting on the vote tabulator machine begins on February 13th. March 1st is the last day to obtain a ballot for absentee or early voting, and March 5th is the election day. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Chief Bingkoma, any report?
Mayor, Counselor, I just want to give a brief report on last year's award ceremony that we held in December prior to Christmas. Originally, this started back in December 2006, prior to my announcing my retirement January 1st. And it originated as an inspection of my department personnel and their equipment. And it was also my way of saying goodbye to my men at that time. And then over the years, it's evolved into an award-type ceremony. And at this time, and what we did in December is we took that opportunity to recognize some of our firefighters that have attained certain achievement. Unfortunately, we have a couple of firefighters that were present that had to leave to a call, but what we did, and I'm thankful that Counselor Bedison was there, and you and me were there last year, we recognized a number of individuals that had attained promotions this past year. We gave them certificates. We also handed out citation bars. We issued citation bars for Honor Guard that was four of you this year. And I'm sure I'm going to forget something here, but we also recognized individuals that had attained their Fire Officer II certification. And that's one of the qualifications, and one of the things that we expect of our captains to attain, so we handed out citations. We also recognized the firefighter for 2012, and unfortunately, he left. But anyway, I asked my captains to submit a letter of recommendation, who they think is worthy of this award. But we received three outstanding letters this year. And I met with my fire staff, and we named firefighter Eugene Rodriguez. He's a big guy that just left. Hopefully, he'll be back, and we can introduce him. I just want to say a couple things about Eugene. He holds a rank of engineer driver, and one of the accomplishments that he did was he had the initiative, took the initiative to attain his Fire Officer II. And like I said earlier, that's what we expect of our captains. He's only been in the department for three years, so that in itself says a lot about Eugene. He's also an assistant volunteer fire chief with Fort Barrett. He's done some really good things with Chief Chavez out there, so in his spare time, you know, we talk about firefighters and people that work for the city that are involved in the community. Eugene actually spends a lot of his, he does some work right on the side, and he actually officiates high school and junior high basketball games. So if you see him running out there in a, out of his uniform and striped uniform, that's Eugene out there. So I can't say enough about Eugene. He's a great employee. He's very well respected by his peers. I'm very proud of him. We also recognized an award at the Medal of Gallantry. Earlier this year, in the summer of 2012, my firefighters responded to a trailer fire. The ship responded. They began their extinguishing efforts, and shortly after that, they were notified that there was, there was a possibility of a man and a child in the trailer. Once that was, once they were able to put the fire out, firefighters, and I'll ask them to stand up, firefighter Jerry O'Neil. Jerry's been with the department three years, and firefighter Tommy Chavez, he's been here nearly eighteen years. These guys aren't really big guys, but you know, they had a lot of heart, and they just got after when it came to putting this man out, and they actually rescued him. He was unconscious. We had additional firefighters arrive and began CPR, and it was great to know that his daughter was not there. So it was the first time that we awarded the Medal of Gallantry, so I think my firefighters, stand-up guys, deserve an embarrassment. It's kind of unique when we respond to a fire, you know, especially late at night. We assume that people are, there's a possibility that they're still in home, in their home, or they're already exited their homes. It's not very often that our firefighters are put in a position where they rescue somebody, so I can imagine that these guys were high-fiving after they did that. I told them after our award ceremony that as a fire chief, I never thought that I would be in the position to, and I feel very privileged to have awarded these medals of honor, so I guess I'm very proud of them. Jesse Gleick, he was one of our firefighters that he left also. He reset his Fire Officer II certification, who was actually promoted earlier this year. Captain Medina will be retiring next month. Unfortunately, he wasn't here. He will have dedicated him to twenty years of service for the town of Silver City. And that's pretty much it. I want to thank Western Mexico for allowing us to use the Global Resource Society, and that was really awesome. We did have a potluck afterwards, and we got together, enjoyed a conversation with their family and so forth. That's pretty much all I have. If there's any questions?
Questions?
I think Counselor Cook said it very well. Thank you and your entire department for a job well done in the last couple of years. I know there's been some very trying periods, and you guys continue to excel and protect the town. We definitely appreciate it and respect the job you do. Any report from the police department? Looked like a deer in headlights there, Mark. Mr. Russell, any report from community development? We will move right along. Next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled "Approval/Disapproval of Request for Restaurant Liquor License with On-Premise Consumption Only." Applicant number A-836420. Applicant name: Leah Allen, LLC, doing business as Adobe Springs Cafe. Proposed location: 1617 Silver Heights Boulevard, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. And I believe Mr. Cook? Oh, hold on, I got more to read. I got through the title. "The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communication from any party to this case?"
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, you're all qualified. "Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise, come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing."
Hi, great cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony I'm about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application, based on the application or actions taken by the director, by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant, staffer, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief, and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to their testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" And then we will make a decision. Mr. Cook, you have the floor. Present your case.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. Please forgive my wife. She was the one that was supposed to be here, but she had some training in Albuquerque, so I got sentenced to it. We just are applying for a restaurant liquor license to Adobe Springs Cafe. We've been in business for approximately two years as the owners. We are currently only operating for breakfast and lunch, and two dinners a week. We'd like to expand our hours of operation for more nighttime, and offering beer and wine at the restaurant to help build our revenues, and to offer a little bit more of a fine dining for evening times, and some lunch applications also. So that's what we're applying for right now. That's pretty much all I got right now.
Thank you. Any questions for this witness? Anything else you'd like to be reflected in the record?
No, sir. Only that Adobe Springs before had had its own liquor licenses there several times before with past owners, so we'd just like to continue on with some of that tradition of the business being what it used to be, so...
Thank you. Are there any witnesses in opposition to the application? Seeing then, Mr. Cook, is there anything else you'd like to be reflected in the record? Does that conclude your case?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Bedison?
I'm sorry, it's been prepared.
Okay. Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness?
No, sir.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider the application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move to approve request for restaurant liquor license with on-premise consumption only. Application number A-836420. Applicant name: Leah Allen, LLC, DBA, Adobe Springs Cafe. Proposed location: 1617 Silver Heights Boulevard, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second to approve, the request for restaurant liquor license with on-premise consumption only. Application number A-836420. Applicant name: Leah Allen, LLC, DBA, Adobe Springs Cafe. Proposed location: 1617 Silver Heights Boulevard, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Roll call, please. No, Mr. Attorney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please, here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bedison?
Mayor, I move for a short break.
There's a motion, a second for a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries will be in recess. We will call this meeting back to order. And the next item on the agenda is another hearing. Approval/Disapproval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1214, Making Certain Findings and Determinations pursuant to the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code in Approving the Silver City Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan. Although the hearing is not technically under the provisions of the Land Use Code, the matter is closely related to land use and development, that it is proper to utilize the Land Use Code provisions regarding the conduct of public hearings to the greatest extent feasible. Such procedure guarantees fair and transparent consideration of the matter and proper allowance for public input. Accordingly, all persons interested in this matter shall be permitted to be sworn and present evidence or opinion. Further, those persons shall be permitted to question staff and other witnesses giving testimony or presenting evidence, who shall remain available and respond appropriately. The presiding officer may impose reasonable limitation on the number of witnesses heard and the nature and length of their testimony. The presiding officer may limit testimony or evidence he finds to be irrelevant, cumulative, or otherwise inappropriate at the... I skipped that part. So, any witnesses intending to testify and participate in this hearing, please come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Leah Allen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony I am about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
This is a notice of intent of an ordinance, and Counselor Maronis is the sponsor of said ordinance, or notice of intent. And you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be brief before I just turn it over to Charlie Dean. When I was asked if I would consider sponsoring this, I didn't realize that we could sponsor items like this on a public hearing, but I was pretty excited from the standpoint that everybody's pretty much heard me state that I'm always pro-business and pro-economic growth and yet it's very rare we actually get to prove it, and in this case, we do. We get to prove that we're gonna be pro-business and pro-economic growth. It's really exciting, especially with something like this document that I've read, that it appears that the only burden that we have associated with that is we kind of, if this is to be adopted sometime in the future, is we kind of imply that we'll continue to be pro-business and pro-economic growth. So I'm pretty excited about this and hearing out what the speakers are gonna be talking about, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Charlie Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Charlie Dean, from the community of San Francisco, 230 St. Francis in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the, for the town of Silver City. This evening, we are considering the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan. If you recall my original initial presentation about the state's redevelopment code and the state statute, we've got the first step covered, which was the designation of the area last month that was approved, and so the second step under the redevelopment code is the actual preparation and approval of the plan itself. And so this evening, we are gonna be talking about the MRA plan. Yeah, that's... It'll keep us awake. What, and if you recall, the main gist of the plan itself is to identify redevelopment projects that will revitalize the downtown area, provide opportunities for economic development. In approving the plan, you will acquire tools that the town and municipalities don't typically have. There's additional authorities now with approval of the plan. And while tonight isn't necessarily, as you know, it's not, the action isn't to approve the plan this evening, but it is to say, yes, let's proceed with the notice of intent to have a public hearing possibly next month on the actual approval of the plan. But we will be talking about the plan this evening. I understand there was a first-class mailing to all the property owners within the area that's occurred, so there may be folks who also wanna speak about the plan tonight. But I will give some background and talk a little bit about the plan itself and what's contained in it, and if you have questions, we can certainly talk about that. So the plan was very similar, but not exactly identical, to the Downtown Action Plan that was approved in October of 2010. And when that Downtown Action Plan was approved by council by resolution in 2010, it was under the full intent that it would also become a Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan, but for reasons that had to do with legislation that was being introduced in 2011, the Town Staff decided to... The timing may not be best at that time. Now, nobody, so the decision was made, let's hold off on adopting the MRA plan until the legislative session was over in 2011. Nobody anticipated that it might be two years later, but here we are. So we are just bringing the plan back and fulfilling what was always intended to be, giving the town some additional economic development tools with the plan. So I've tried to be quite intentional in terms of, there are some revisions to this document tonight from the 2010 plan, one of them being that the designation was approved last month, so I've added those dates to the document, and I've replaced the designation area. The actual boundary map is different in this document. But I've tried to keep it as much without changing it from the 2010 plan, and there's a reason for that, which I'll talk about in a moment. This plan back in 2010 was about a year and a half in process. There was a steering committee that worked with me when we were creating the plan, which is on the acknowledgements page here. I had a pretty comprehensive planning team, traffic engineers, economists, historic preservationists, subconsultants who were helping us on the plan, and that's, and it was because of, and I'm just gonna look at the table of contents, I'm not gonna talk about all of these, the elements to the plan, but there was an extensive community process in creating this plan, not just with the steering committee that worked with me for once, once a month for that year and a half, but the three workshops that we had around the community, one of those being a two-day charrette in the Silco where we had approximately 80 people participating and actually helping draw the plan up. So there was a lot of fingerprints on this plan back in 2010, and a lot of people were involved, and it was pretty extensive, and so I've tried to keep it as true to that plan because everyone knows the plan back then, it's the same plan that we're really looking at tonight, and so there probably have been some things that have changed, and maybe we can talk about what those are, but I just wanted you to know that I've tried to keep the integrity of the process and the plan as complete as possible, so we're not making substantial changes that the community may not be aware of. So, but the table of contents outlines the process and the elements. Really, what's important with an MRA plan, the real part of the plan itself is page, in this case, it's page 91, and I'm just going to jump to... Oh, I think I'm gonna jump to page 91 quickly. All right, I will get to page 90. Oh, 88, we're close. So the heart of the plan, and this is the implementation page on 91, are the projects. And so these are the projects that are going to help revitalize downtown, that have been identified from the community and from the consultants. And so these projects are what the plan, the tools that are allowed under the state statute is what those tools will be used on. And they're pretty comprehensive, and there's a lot to work with here, so the plan can always be amended. It wasn't intended that we were going to amend the projects and get into that kind of change to the plan now. Basically, the consultants, myself and the Town Staff feel that there's still enough to do here, that, you know, this is a great, it's a great starting point. Some of these things have been started, some of these are being worked on already, but I'm not gonna go into the detail on the projects themselves, but there's illustrations and there's more description on the plan. But that's really, that's the heart of what MRA plans are about, and that's what the council and the Town Staff and Silver City Main Street will be focusing their efforts on when the plan's adopted. That really is my presentation. If there are questions, we can talk a little bit more about some of the details.
Let's let any of the other witnesses that wanna testify in support go, and then we'll come back to questions, and kind of be a little more comprehensive that way. Any other witnesses wanna testify in support? Well, that was easy. Are there any questions for Mr. Dean? I appreciate your explanation on the development of the plan and the intent, and I think really up to about page 55 or so is when the downtown development plan that was developed by the steering committee really kicks in. And I had, I have a couple of concerns, and I sent them to Nick. The, on page one, the very last sentence is, "In December 2012, the Town Council approved the Silver City Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Designation Report," and that's not factual. If we could probably drop off the word "report." As the designation report was evidenced in having sufficient findings to designate the area, though we did not approve the report. And then go to page seven. Under goals, the very last goal on page seven states traffic control devices. There's no qualifier for that. It doesn't say more, less, better, more effective, more efficient. So I think that should be, every other item in the goals has a qualifier.
Got it. Those were the goals from the 2004 comprehensive plan? Okay. So we'll look at the comprehensive plan and see if there's a qualifier.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
The page 17, it talks about the 2009 Land Use Code being under review by the Mayor and the council, and that has since passed. So I'm sure it was relevant at the time and accurate and has since been resolved. The page 27, I know that it talks about the lighting downtown, not meeting the state's night skies, and I know there's been a lot of work on night skies, lighting, and PNM is making an effort to resolve that, and I would, I would like to make sure that that sentence is actually accurate before we pass it in 2013.
Okay.
Page 39, it says it's a four-hour drive to Santa Fe. I'm not riding with you.
Alex is going, "What are you talking about?"
Got it. Page 45, sadly, Isaacs is no longer a major employer downtown. Page 51, I think it would be very simple to have the current visitor center data on what our visitors have been in the last more recent years.
We hope it's gone up.
We hope. I think that fixes a lot, you know, there is a qualifying statement in the plan that states that this was written in 2009 and 10. There is absolutely, I don't have any objection to using data that was available and current at that point, especially with that statement. You know, some of the heartburn that I got in trying to read this was, we're taking something that was done in 2010, and we're actually passing it into the laws of the town of Silver City in 2013, and granted, not much has changed, but certain things I felt were a little more important. There's somewhere in the plan, and I apparently didn't send it to Nick, but we use the word "recently," and that's really interesting when you have the plan states it was written, that was on page 45, when you have the plan states it was written in 2009, 10, but the law gets passed in 2013. Now, recently, it becomes up to four years.
History.
So I would like to see maybe that either removed or qualified a little better in... What do, either not, don't use the word "recently."
Yeah.
I think the example was a tattoo shop, or tattoo parlor recently closed, and, which I think was accurate in 2009 and is accurate in 2012. Different tattoo parlors, but I just think we have to be careful with, because of that big gap, that we not use those very subjective words. Pretty much all the notes that I had, and I really, I was very careful not to go past where the Downtown Action Plan really kicked in, 'cause that was done by a thorough process, and far be it from me to think I'm better. Counselor, Bedison?
So I'm gonna take off from where the Mayor left off, but I was not, unfortunately, I was out of town yesterday and drove back from Santa Fe, not in four hours, though.
No, I can't do it in four hours.
Yeah, so he picked up on one of the things, I kinda went, "Four hours?" Alex read it, but anyway, let me try to do it. I did not write down specifics like that and where I can quickly go through it, so I have to go through my little green stinkies, so bear with me just a little bit. I had a question on page two. At the last bullet point, it talks about incorporate sustainability as a guiding principle through the innovative use of our resources. And so when I first read that, I didn't know what the sustainability, the definition of sustainability was. Is it economic? Is it environmental? Is it all of it? So I guess, when I first read it, I was, I first thought, well, I thought it meant only environment, 'cause when I think of resources, I think of environmental resources and using them appropriately, but sustainability is so much more, 'cause we wanna make sure that our downtown's economically sustainable, so I don't know if there's some way that that could be qualified a little bit more, so that it says economically, you know, however to qualify, so that we know that we're talking about a broader definition of it? Because I think that that seems to be that we're looking at economic sustainability as well in our downtown, so I'm not sure what the, what the actual meaning was there, so just a question mark. I noticed that you did do one change that I had requested from the Downtown Action Plan in the history part, but then you went a little too far. On page four, Apache Indians did not come into the area until probably just at the latter end of the 1500s and into the 1600s, according to archaeological information, so 1300s is a little too early. There's a couple of archaeological prehistoric cultures that are left out of the mix there, so we don't have to get into depth, but at least to qualify that statement, because the Apaches, as far as we know, the Athabaskan, the American Athabaskan groups weren't even in northern New Mexico until about 1400s. They couldn't have come this far, so that's...
Thank you.
Okay. And... So I just wanted to reiterate, you know, one of the things that on page seven that you state that is part of the Silver City Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan and Process, previc, current, and plans, policies, codes, and programs of the town and other agencies were reviewed, so just to try to go through the plan to make sure that all those current things, like the Mayor brought up about the Land Use Code, just that that statement is accurately reflected throughout, 'cause I think that the preface that you gave us and the other information is good, but just so that we can kinda continue on that vein, since it is 2013. And with that in mind, let's see. On, I didn't know on page 14, where you're talking, you talk about the town of Silver City Land Use Code, and then there's the town of Silver City zoning, and I don't know if it's with that particular land use code that they're talking about, the Silver City zoning, and talked about the seven, because it says the town presently, has presently seven zoning designations. So I don't know if the presently refers to the 1999... So I don't know if the presently refers to the 1999 or to the...
Peters County.
Because there's more, I mean, because the resident, the commercial, there's, there's different definitions out, because we've got downtown historical. So I'm not sure that this may be in the right place anymore. It might want to shift it to after you talk about the 2010 land use code.
Yes.
So do you see what I mean?
Yes.
And you might have to shift that to...
Yes, we should.
It's the presently that bothered me. I didn't know what presently meant.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Presently in 2010, that was the code that was in place, but it has, you've adopted a new code, so...
Right. So now presently, we have a newer.
Yes. So we're going to get rid of those presentlies and recentlies and...
Okay. And then following that, if we do do that, then I would suggest that on the following, on page 16, that you provide a new zoning map, because the commercial district, there's different names. It's now be the downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, commercial. So just to be reflective of now how our new, how it looks now today with the, with the new zones. And then in that, trying to be, trying to maintain with that, trying to be more recent. Page 23, in the last paragraph, it talks about traffic flows well along Silver City streets. And then it talks about speed limits are low, generally 25 miles per hour or less, unless posted otherwise, it's 30 miles per hour in the, within the city limits. And of course, we now have a new speed limit downtown on Bullard, which is 15 miles per hour. So it might be nice to update that, because that's something that's new, that really is part of that Downtown Action Plan, and moving towards making sure that pedestrians and everybody have equal movement along there. On page 26, under transit, it says Silver City has a private transit service, and I kind of wondered what that was. And then it says Coricamino. But Coricamino's, and it's set a private transit service since the Town of Silver City, Grant County, and Willa County. It's actually a Southwest Regional Transit District, so just to update that a little bit. And that's easy, just to kind of add that. And my only other comment is, I think, I think, oh, no, there's one, just a couple. On page 33, it happens not just there, so if this is in a Word document, you can do a search for it. It recently talks about the ongoing rehab at the Moore Hotel, and it's still being worked on, but it is now open. And so to update, you know, we have a closure, but now we have a new hotel open downtown. It'd be nice to have that reflected, because Kurt has done so much work on that, and after seven years to have it open, and I know occupied with folks coming in and people giving it range reviews, that's kudos to part of the, part of what's going on downtown. And I, I just really, just one more question on page 38. There we go to one of the recently comments. On the second paragraph, it says, "Town of Silver City, New Mexico was recently designated an arts and cultural district." So that was in 2009, correct?
It was 2010.
2010.
Actually, it happened the same night that the Downtown Action Plan was approved.
Okay.
You approved the ordinance.
That's right. We did it both at the same time.
Yes, right.
That's right. Well, it's now, now we've gone down the road a bit, so...
Yeah.
So then, the next sentence is, "The Silver City, New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan will define the boundaries of the arts and cultural district." Actually, the arts and cultural district area was, has been defined, and it's broader than, in a different way, it's a different shape than our MRA, than our MRA district does, I mean, our MRA area does, because it includes the university up into a larger portion. So I feel like that's just a little bit off, that sentence. So if we could either change that, maybe reflect that the arts and cultural district boundary is slightly different than the MRA, if you really want to put something in there about that, because it incorporates the university museum, other art on campus...
Right.
As well as the McCray Gallery and other, the Fine Arts Center, you know, theater, things like that.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, my comments. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Any other witnesses want to testify in support of the, this NOI? Any witnesses in opposition to this NOI? Counselor Ronis, did you want to address the whereas?
Mr. Mayor, well, I have some basic questions as we go through a lot of these. These items, immaterial as they are, there's a number of cleanup changes, clarifications, historical corrections, and updates. This isn't anything that has to be laid out very specifically, or, or in their immaterial basis, we can, that can be addressed in a later document.
I think the fact that they are mostly immaterial is, does not change the intent of the document, and I think we've provided the staff enough evidence and direction to make the corrections and amendments.
Okay.
In a way that when it comes back for a final reading, the document has the same intent and is brought up.
Just cleaned up.
Cleaned up in a current form for today.
On another note, an item that was brought up that was reflected in this NOI is on the second whereas, it reads, "Whereas the Town of Silver City, Town and Silver City Main Street and their employees have for some time engaged in a study of blighted areas within the downtown and submitted their findings and recommendations concerning the area detailed in the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Designation Report, which was approved by the Town Council at the December 11, 2012 Town Council Meeting as Resolution Number The approved is not correct, because we did not approve that, that report. We merely did the, the final sentence, which designated the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area as detailed in the map of the area. So I would be looking for, in a, in a motion, if there, if there was no objection, that we change the approved to discussed and considered. It says Redevelopment Area Designation Report, which was approved. We have to cross out approved, which wasn't the case, and replace it with discussed and considered. I think that, that more appropriately fits with what happened on that day. Those are my own comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the council? Any witnesses in opposition to this Notice of Intent, Ordinance? Can I just read this? For the record, this hearing on this NOI is the public hearing required by Section So we're meeting the requirements that are set out and disclosed in the, in the NOI and the entire Metropolitan Redevelopment process that is, we're required to follow. And this is it. Mr. Russell?
There will be a second public hearing when you actually hear the ordinance. It's sort of cobbled together between the NOI and the ordinance process that we regularly have and the statute requirement. So this is a public hearing. Letters are sent out to notify people about the meeting. There will be the same process again for the actual formal adoption of the ordinance.
That is correct. Thank you. So if that concludes, anything else you want to be reflected in the record? Anything else, Counselor Ronis? That concludes this hearing as the council prepared to make a decision.
Yes.
Entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1214, making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and approving the Silver City Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan with the one change on the second whereas, where we cross out approved and replace it with discussed and considered.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
My second to motion is stated.
There's a motion, a second to approve Noticement 10, Ordinance Number 1214, as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, there's a motion and a second to approve Noticement 10, Ordinance Number 1214, and ordinance making certain findings and determinations pursuant to the New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Code and approving Silver City Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan with the amendment of marked out approved and insert discussed and considered in the second whereas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 2013-01, Open Meetings. And this is another requirement in the law that we disclose annually, when and where, what time, and all the specifics that we plan to hold meetings in the next calendar year. And this resolution is to meet that criteria. So once again, we're saying that our meetings will be the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month at 6 o'clock in this room, or elsewhere if advertised.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2013-01, Open Meetings.
On a second. There's a motion, second to approve Resolution Number 2013-01, Open Meetings. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, second, no further discussion, to approve Resolution Number 2013-01, Open Meetings. Rock.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And I entertain the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
My second.
There's a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.